Good evening. We'll call to order the City Commission Meeting, meeting of September 5th, 2017. First thing on our agenda is roll call.
Commissioner Locke?
Present.
Commissioner Lewis?
Here.
Commissioner Baddeley?
Here.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Present.
Mayor Haynes?
Present. Thank you. Next on our agenda would be invocation.
First, if I give the invocation, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Reverend Roosevelt Rain. I've been at Eldorado for 22 years. I've been here and also pastor at Andy Art Baptist Church. I've been in the ministry for 41 years. Thank God that here I'm still in there. I haven't turned away. But let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come at this time, Father, thanking you for the many blessings. Father, we just want to thank you for our life. Father, we just want to thank you for what you have been to us, Father. We just want you to keep on, Father, doing what you have been doing for us in the past. Father, look on our elected officials, Father, let them make the right decision. Father, look on the president, Father, as he's doing about his job, Father. Father continues to bless. Father, we just want you to bless Eldorado. Eldorado, Father, bless the hospital, the doctors and the nurses. Father, bless every branch that I will service, Father, as they protect your peoples. Father, we want you to look on those peoples that down in Houston and all around, Father, that are dealing with the disasters, Father, those that are helping out, Father, continues to bless. Father, look on the one that have lost loved one. And Father continues to bless us, Father. Father, let Eldorado be a beacon up on the hill, Father, that someone may see your light in us, Father, and glorify you, which is in heaven. Father, for this, we'll give you all the praise. Father continues to bless our children and the schools and the teachers. Father, to teach them the right way, Father. Father, that they may be leaders of tomorrow. And for this, Father, we are thankful. Father continues to bless us, Father, if you have done in the past. Because, Father, we know that our help comes from thee and thee alone. Father continues, as you have done in the past. We ask thee blessing in the darling son Jesus' name. And for our own sake, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on for our agenda, no personal appearances tonight. Public comments. Anybody from the public wish to address the commission? Being none, we'll move on to consent agenda. Agenda was sent out to everybody earlier this last week. Chance to look through it. Any questions or comments from the commission on the consent agenda? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the consent agenda as presented to be approved.
Second. Case been moved in second. Any further comments? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Do we have our sound? Is your sound on? Okay, I'll speak up. Thank you.
He might not have heard you during the public comment. I think that might be why he's here.
Okay. We go back to public comment. Everybody okay with that? Are you wanting to come up for public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry for that. It's okay with the commission, we'll go back to public comment.
Certainly.
All right. Come on up, state your name and address and...
I'm Jim Miller, 345 Huntington Road, Eldorado, Kansas. I know we're here tonight to address the housing development that is supposed to go in there between Township Village and Eldorado. Most of us didn't know anything about it until after we heard the comments from last city commission meeting. And we are very opposed to anything that resembles anything close to what that appears to be. Duplexes and triplexes do not attract divisive renters. I don't care what kind of sales job they did on the...to the city people. But I have a bunch of property here in town. And I will not rent to certain people because of their historical background and... There's a...you attract a lot of people to that area, which we do not have in that area now. And I want to back up there to Oil Hill Street. We did that several years ago. There were supposed to be some things straightened out up there that never did happen. Blacktop was supposed to be taken out.
On your property?
Yes.
Okay.
And it was supposed to be filled with dirt.
I don't recall that, Mr. Miller, but...
You can see it out there now.
I can walk out?
It's still there.
Is it? Is it...was it an old driveway or something serving your property?
The old road, Old Oil Hill Road, went right across my property. And it was supposed to be resurveyed to give me right of way for the...in line with the properties to the south. That's what I was told at the time. It didn't ever happen.
I'd be happy to meet you and discuss and see what we might have in our files. Project is probably, what, 13, 14 years ago?
Yes. Cost me $10,000.
Yeah. I'd be happy to meet with you, Mr. Miller, and you can show me what...I certainly...I don't recall.
Well, it's not hard to recall when you see the blacktop out there.
Okay.
In the middle of the grass. It's supposed to be grass. Tree limbs in town don't seem to be taken care of anymore. I find that there...somebody comes along during the night and pitches them back up on the street, on the sidewalk, out of the...out of the streets into the yards. And that has happened to me at least three, four different times.
Okay.
And I'm not happy about it, not a bit. Because one of them was a pretty good sized limb, and you could see where they'd been run over out in the street several times. Somebody come along and pitched them back up off of the right of way and instead of gathering them up like the city maintenance people are supposed to do in the past. And we seem to have a oversupply of four-door pickups now, but yet we can't supply mosquito spray. We have mosquitoes galore this year. But we got all kinds of fancy vehicles that I think are totally unnecessary. Being a country boy like me, I came from western Kansas, and if you needed a four-wheel drive or four-wheel drive, some of them are four-wheel drive, but four-door pickup by you. And another thing is dips that was addressed on South Denver. We've got one on the south side of Third Street that you don't dare take it very fast at all, or you get knocked out of your seat. Where you come across Third Street up on Huntington Road. And I'm assuming we're going to pave Huntington Road sometime in the future. We've had dips like that where patrol cars have been gouging the blacktop and the cement even. And they go flying through there and it's not good, not a good picture when they get done. And our upkeep out there, Township Village, has just been nothing since we got into the city.
The what in Township Village?
Since we got into the city.
What has been nothing?
To upkeep on our streets. It was guaranteed that we would see no change at the time. Of course, you weren't here then. None of you were here then. You might remember, Nick, but I doubt that because that was a long time ago. And there was quite a confusion about trying to assure us all that we have nothing to fear, our upkeep will be the same, our snow removal will be the same. Anymore, we hardly ever see a snowplow in wintertime and that's the last thing.
Okay.
Tree limb thing is bad. Because to have somebody...I come by one evening out here and saw a tree limb out in my...in the front of one of my properties. By morning, that tree limb was back behind the sidewalk. That should not happen. You had maintenance people out in the meantime before that. And I know your...maintenance people aren't motivated like they used to be probably, but maybe somebody needs to poke a stick along there and get them going.
Oh, Mr. Miller, I'm sorry. I beg to differ with you on that, that they're not motivated. I think they're highly motivated, but I have a question. And our public works director isn't here, but do we normally pick up trees limbs other than after a wind event?
This is after a wind event.
It is after a wind?
Yes. It's windstorm damage, what I'm talking about.
Okay. Do we announce that we're going to do that normally?
It's pretty...it's been a pretty rare occasion that the city goes out and picks up limbs citywide. I mean, it's typically a very significant event when that occurs. Now, if trees do fall within the right of way and they need to be removed, open the road back up, we'll take...they'll take care of those. But generally, just small windstorms, the city's not going around picking up limbs.
Oh, if a limb is as big as your leg, and they pitch it up behind the curb, don't you think that's unusual?
You know, if you could tell us the time and the date that happened and try to figure out what occurred and look into it.
You're joking.
Well, if there is a limb and it's in front of somebody's home who's not able to take care of it, can they call the city and have it take care of it's in the street?
Yeah.
So a phone call or something like that could facilitate some of that, too.
One windstorm recently, I went by three different properties. There were limbs down at all three, and they were all up behind the sidewalk by the next morning. Now, that is not how it used to be. I know times have changed. And you've got a lot of other irons in the bar to take care of. But you've got to take care of your residents, too, because that is what pays the taxes.
I appreciate that very much, Mr. Miller. I guess when you...in the future, when you have limbs down, make a call.
Well, I see no need...
If it's in the street, we'll take care of it.
I see no need to call. We've got people traveling in the streets all the time, and you can see where the limbs have been run over out in the streets several times. Because there's trash out there in the street, but the limb itself is back up behind the sidewalk. Sorry. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention. Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Being none, thank you, Mr. Miller, for bringing that to our attention. We'll move to our next item on the agenda, which would be new business, which is the extension of city limits.
Yes, Mayor Commission, when the city of Eldorado pursued paving Towanda Avenue from Abbeville Road to Edgemoor Street, the city agreed to annex the entire road and right of way at the completion of the project. It took a little time here. The county had some discrepancies in trying to figure out the true right of way width on the south side of Towanda Avenue. That work has been completed, and the county engineer did file a road plat, basically, describing the south right of way. So tonight, we're asking you to consider an ordinance extending the city limits to the south right of way line of Towanda Avenue.
Okay. No, no, this is something that we've been working on or has been worked on for a couple years now.
How far is it extending?
To the portions that aren't within the city limits. So the city of Eldorado, our city limit lines currently, for the most part, go down the center of Towanda Avenue. There are a few residents on the south side of Towanda Avenue that are entirely within the city limits. They're down close to Constant Creek. So this will just extend those where the city limits is currently at the center line south 30 feet, so that we get the entire road right of ways within our city.
Okay. Does that take any of the land on the south of the road?
No. No private property. No private property. This is just...this is county right of way that Eldorado Township maintains, but we all came to agree that Township kicks through some funds into the project. The county will throw some funds in the project when this is complete this evening. So we definitely want to get this wrapped up.
Okay. Any further questions or comments?
What's the ordinance number?
G-1263.
All right. I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G-1263, adding to and extending the city limits in the city of Eldorado, Kansas, by adding to and enlarging and extending the city limits to include certain territory here and described.
Second.
Case been moved in second. Any further discussion? Being none, roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Commissioner...I'm sorry, Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Baddeley?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be the paving of Marmington Road.
Yes, we discussed this a while back at one of your work sessions, that there was some interest in the residents along that roadway to see an improvement made. It also falls within the annexation plan and the CIP for improving these remaining roads that aren't up to a city standard out in the Township Village area. So this evening, we're asking you to consider setting a public hearing. And what that will do, that will initiate the project. We will then notify all of the property owners within the improvement district of their proposed estimated assessments. They'll be notified of the public hearing date, and then we can hold the public hearing and you as a body can determine if you want to proceed with the project.
So this work is being initiated by the city?
Correct.
Rather than initiated by residents passing petition?
Correct. We were...we've tried and gone back and forth to get residents interested in hearing petition, and we weren't able to get that. And we discussed the process, if you recall, at a work session. This notifies everyone. This actually sets a hearing time and date. They all see and hear the same information. Sometimes we've had some issues with...
Confusion?
Property owners going around, confusion.
Okay.
It's definitely a road that's desperately in need of improvement, along with the remaining roads out there, so staff would encourage you to move forward.
This is also going to take care of Diagonal Road, too, right?
Diagonal Road will come up later within the plan. This will improve it from Second Avenue to Sixth Avenue.
Is there a map in here?
You know, I don't think I gave you a map, but Second Avenue is a road just north of Sutherland, Sutherland's, and then we'll head on north all the way to Sixth Avenue.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions or comments from the commission? We have information here based on impact and estimates and a list of property owners that are going to be receiving.
Correct.
Is that what I see here, is the list of property owners? Now, benefit district, this is going to be those that touch the road. Is there a larger district than just those who live along the road?
There isn't on this. That area out there was platted two lots deep. Each lot has a road facing it. Now, when we work on the east-west roads, that's where we go half the block.
Okay.
And the blocks become longer, where you pick up those folks that are donating front of the road.
Okay. Do you have a resolution number?
2850.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? If there are none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that Resolution 2850, a resolution calling and providing for the giving of notice of a public hearing on the advisability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the city of Eldorado, Kansas, under the provisions of KSA 12-6A01, as amended and supplemented, and providing for the giving of notice of said hearing, paving improvements Marmington Project 51.
I'll second it.
Is that you, Greg?
Yes.
Thank you. Moved in second. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We will have a public hearing on October 2nd. Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be the extension of sanitary sewer to the new Grandview Elementary School.
Yes, this is a sewer project that was you guys authorized. We did receive bids on the project. The engineer's estimate at bid time for this project was $242,682. The low bidder was NOOP construction at $250,190.50, and Allen's Excavating submitted a bid of $359,588.00. During authorization, we estimated construction cost to be $319,824. So although NOOP's construction or bid was higher than the estimate at the time of the bid opening, we did authorize more than that pre-designed. Feel like NOOP gave us a good solid bid on this project. This is a very deep sewer line. We are...our profile is about 20 foot deep in the rock to get this property to gravity drain sewer. And we feel very confident that they can perform this work and still be with under authorization dollars and assessments to the school district.
Okay. Thank you.
Under the fiscal impact statement, it says something to the effect of, "BY USD 490, determined sufficient cash is available at the end of the report for..."
At the time when this project is finalized and you guys are ready to spread assessments, they discussed with the city that they might be in the position to have funds available to just pay cash lump sum for the project instead of bonding it over 20 years.
Okay. Any further question? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that since NOOP Construction has submitted the lowest and best bid of $250,190.50 for project number 514, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnish the proper bonds.
Second.
Got a tie. Try and go again, Wilkinson. Okay, it's been moved in second. I just kind of announced right here, I will abstain out of this...on this vote, so I need... In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Okay. Let's move to item number 13 on our agenda, which is the 2017 MIH grant application.
Good evening. Linda Jolly with Eldorado, Inc. This afternoon, the Ad hoc Housing Committee, over lunch, had a chance to meet and discuss recommendation for final parameters for the 2017 Kansas Housing Resource Corporation MIH grant. We have determined that from a logistical standpoint, we're trying to...and the question kept up...came up several times. What do our housing studies say and what are we trying to utilize our funds for? And basically, the housing studies have identified the need for more housing in the 150 to 200 thousand dollar price range. That's at least two-bedroom, two-bath, but preferably three-bedroom, two-bath. And then the need for more three-bedroom, two-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath quality rental properties. So with that in mind and the pre-applications that we've received, we've established a criteria that I'll quickly go over with you. Logistically, in the first round, after we hopefully receive approval for our grant request of $190,000, we'll open a window of time where homeowners can come forward and apply for down payment assistance on new housing construction. And the criteria for the home is that it must be a home that's never been occupied. It could be completed and ready for purchase. It could be under construction, or it could be a custom home. Single-family homes, half of a twin home, a single condo unit, or half of a duplex, any of those would qualify. If they are buying a two-bath, two-bedroom home, they'll receive up to $10,000 in down payment assistance. If it's a three-bedroom, two-bath home, they'll be eligible for up to $15,000. But the assistance will not exceed 10% of the purchase price at closing. And the down payment is...assistance is for down payment, not closing costs. So you can't purchase a home with nothing...nothing at risk yourself. I mean, you'd at least have to pay closing costs. No cash will be paid directly to the homeowner. The home cost shall not exceed $200,000. They must have a firm mortgage commitment letter or proof that they have the cash to purchase the home and a fully executed contract for purchase or construction. The home must be at least 1,100 square feet. If appliances such as dishwasher, stove and hood are not included, minimum accommodations for those appliances to be installed will be available in the home. A basement's not required, but it's allowed, and they must have at least a one-car garage and off-street parking for at least two cars. Finished grade, front and back seated yards are required and concrete driveways. Then the applicants themselves have to meet the income standard under the Modern Income Housing Program, and then have to be in compliance with accessibility standards as well as energy efficiency. And those three items are required under the MIH grant itself. We're going to give them 90 days from the date their application is approved to start the home, and it must be completed within nine months. And under the program criteria for MIH, they have to file...we have to file a subordinate mortgage for 10 years. And during that time, if they sell or don't continue to occupy the home, try to rent it out, whatever, they do have to repay the prorated amount of that...of the actual down payment assistance they received. So if they own it for five years, then they owe 50% of the assistance back. And I did recheck that, and it is 10 years for underoccupied units. Once the 60 days has passed, then we'll open up again on first come, first served basis for applications from homeowners or from developers building new construction rental housing units. The guidelines for the homeowners will remain the same, and the guidelines for the rental housing... housing says that each unit is eligible for up to $10,000, but not to exceed 10% of the unit price. Minimum two-bedroom, two-bath. Funds can be used for land acquisition, demolition, site preparation, or gap filler. They must have a firm commitment for financing or proof of the available cash. Again, property must be properly zoned, and they must have site control. Site control means you could have a contract on it, but you have to at least have that. They'll have to provide the site plan and floor plans at the time of application, and indicate if there's any utility extensions that need to be done. If so, they need to give us a timeline for that. And then according to the MIH guidelines, and you're assuming that your developer's going to be applying for multiple units, they need to provide a list of the development costs, or their signed agreement with the contractor to build that, provide the projected income, annual expense information, and legal description for those rental units, indicate whether a relocation of tenants is required. If you were demoing, if you were going to build on four lots and one of you had a building, a home on it, or a rental, and you were going to relocate those, the people in the rental, you have to indicate what type of relocation allowance you're going to give them. Then they have to provide any partnership information and BIOS, as well as their development team information, which would be their bank, their architects, maybe engineers if they need to use them. The units have to have at least one-car garage and two-car off-street parking, have to be at least 825 square feet, again, finished grade, front and back seated yards, concrete driveways, meet the program criteria again. They have to start 90 days, but we will negotiate the length of time they have to build based on the number of units at the time we approve the application. And then the program criteria says they have to keep those properties for five years, and that they must be rented to moderate-income households, or they have to repay the prorated amount that they received, so. Questions? There was a lot of discussion today to get to this, and we talked about some different things at our last session, which were included in the original criteria, but there was a strong feeling about some of the criteria in regard to infill, which we had mentioned at this meeting before. And I think there was a consensus of the group that we accept applications on a first-come, first-served basis rather than a rubric, and that, you know, they needed to be ready to build. And the logistics of the down payment assistance is, rather than the builder trying to say, "I'm going to build two houses and I want down payment assistance," and not knowing whether they would actually have a buyer, this way, a buyer comes to the table that's fully qualified, and you're seeing either a new home purchased or constructed. And I think for the most part, the 50 pre-applications that we got, in almost, in most instances, would be able to qualify under this criteria.
Questions or comments from the commission?
I'm confused. So what is, so what was the committee's priority, again? I was trying to...
New home construction. In the 150 to 200, or at least under 200,000 cost.
Okay.
Priority being three-bedroom, two-bath, that would accept the two-bedroom, two-bath units also.
And that's for the whole 190,000?
Well, if you had, let's say we had 19 people come forward on first-come, first-served basis, that were going to build two-bedroom, two-bath homes, then the money would be gone.
The difference here than before, when we make applications, we're making, I think, a generic application.
Yes.
For $190,000, this is, I think, as I understand the ask. And then, and then instead of having a project, a specific project in mind to make the application, we're putting together some parameters for which we would, we would allocate those funds to whether it be a purchase, private, not private, well, a purchase, a homeowner's incentive versus a rental incentive. So a pool of money asked for through KHRC, which is not uncommon in other communities to ask for a pool of money rather than a specific project of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
It's not, it's not without precedent.
It has precedent.
It's not something we've done before, but it's not without precedent. Allocating $10,000 to $15,000 for a down payment assistance for a homeowner to come in and say, let's just say, this is awarded, and somebody says, somebody fits this modern income range, they submit an application that I'd like to buy a house, it's in the under $200,000 range, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house, qualify for $15,000 for down payment assistance through this program.
And these other communities that have applied for this pool of money, have they been successful doing that?
They have, in, they have. One of the things I want to say about, that I brought up, is in the years that we've been applying, there's some pretty hefty challenges to a developer that has to come in six months in advance of an announcement and try to get a loan commitment. And you have to have those loan commitments to be able to submit that project. So then, in the instance of our last application, where we were applying for 400,000, they offered us 90. And then they're back, what can you do with that? We came back, can you give us 120? But you're back through this whole process again, and one of the things about the program's readiness, and being able to qualify because you're ready. We were ready with the 400,000 dollar project. It's taken, our project started, I mean, I went today, the demolition is beginning today, and we would have heard about this last January. So over time, we're not going to be able to keep up with keeping our projects completed in time to apply again. And so this time, where we had 50 units apply, and again, some of those were going to take, you know, a lot of commitment for funding, and, you know, whether they have site control yet or not, have they rezoned, I mean, we were at the point where no project was totally ready to start immediately, and have everything by September 15th. This appears to me that we're meeting some of the criteria of MIH, in that we're leveraging 90, $9 for every dollar they give us, or more. That, you know, should be good in the leverage criteria for the application. We have an ability to start, and this allows multiple people to take advantage of this. It could be more than one developer. It could be multiple owners, and it can be a mixture of both, so.
And you, you probably said it, and I probably just missed it, but what, so the priority is to the single-family owner occupied, and that's for, for how long?
60 days.
60 days.
The first 60 days.
Okay.
And then the remaining, and the funds that aren't committed at that point, will be open to, continue to be open to homeowners, but also be open to developers that are going to build rental properties.
So this spreadsheet that was attached to this?
Last time, where we showed all your applicants. Is that the spreadsheet we're talking about?
Yeah.
Where there's project one, two, three, and four?
Right.
Well, okay, let's say we open it up for 60 days, and two people come forward that are going to build a three-bedroom, two-bath house. We've committed 30,000 of the 190. You'd have 160,000 left for application. See, your number one on that list was probably going to build single-family homes. Number two said they might. Number three is strictly building new units, upper story.
Rehab.
Is number, is that three?
That's rehab.
The rehab's three.
Three. And number four was to build strictly rental units. So all four of those applicants in there, they have an opportunity to utilize some of these funds.
Some of them.
Some of them. If no homeowner came forward, and the first one in the sheet says, "I'm going to build 19 units, rental," you know, then they could come forward. So I, you're going to be able to fund somewhere between 12 and 19 units. And it could be any configuration of that based on who comes forward.
As long as it's under 200,000.
Excuse me?
As long as it's under 200,000.
Right. And we did some, just brief calculations today. Your family of four, income level, I think, is 101,000 dollars. That's their gross income. If you kind of work that backwards, you're looking at families that can qualify with lending for about a home in the 150 to 200,000 price range. So for it to be much higher than that, they might not be able to qualify either for the financing, or qualify under the income category. So I think we're fairly close to being right where we need to be for the moderate income side. You know, somebody could have that income and have a tremendous amount of savings and be able to get a lesser mortgage. You know, we hope that 10% down payment assistance isn't all they are able to put down on a home. That's another criteria, that they might be able to afford more of a home, or more finishes, or whatever.
You mentioned not moving forward with the matrix, but rather first-come, first-served, but then also talked about three bedrooms being a priority over two-bedroom. So I guess I'm confused. If a two-bedroom comes in, and they're first, they're ahead of a three-bedroom applicant, it's first-come, first-served?
First-come, first-served, but on the owner's side, the three-bedroom is allowed more funds than the two-bedroom.
Okay, but it's not a, it's preferred only by the amount we, by the amount being offered, not preferred based on award?
Right.
Okay.
New lot or infill? New lot or infill?
Either one.
Okay.
You'll remember that we've offered an incentive to build spec homes. One of the things about that is we've got some really nice homes, but that isn't what the moderate-income family was looking for.
Well, and then there's, there's, you know, new lot versus, versus infill, there's another incentive for the infill with NRP.
With more.
So there's some additional incentive there that a new lot necessarily wouldn't, wouldn't have, so. Okay. Any further questions or thoughts? The ask here, the direction here is to authorize, to submit the application to KHRC, which is due...
The 15th.
The 15th of this month.
That day.
And we're ready to go after this, everything's in order after we give this approval-ish?
We'll all be put together, but yes.
All right. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct the city manager to complete the application that's submitted to the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation.
Second. Okay, so we moved it second. Any further comment, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Vacation of an alley in Riverside. Looks like maybe something was done in 1906, but we can't find paperwork, so need to do it again?
Yeah, we, we have the ordinance number, have the date, but we cannot locate the actual ordinance. All the records that we have, other than the ordinance, tell us it was vacated. There's no need for an alley there. There's some property transferred up there, where the title company brought it to our attention, so we're asking you this evening just to go ahead and revacate the alley.
Okay. Do we have to use a current ordinance number, or we use the old?
Let's use a new one.
Thanks. You have an ordinance number?
G1264.
Entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that ordinance number G1264, ordinance relating, relating to and providing for the vacation of a certain alley in Block 28 of Riverside Edition, that City of El Dorado, Kansas be approved.
Second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further comment? Roll call.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, 15 is reports from advisory or other work from the commission outside of this meeting.
I have no advisory meetings.
Okay.
No advisory meeting, but I did want to mention, is this a thought connected? There, it seems to have been here in the last several months, a rash of illegal dumping in town. And just need to reiterate to our citizens that these commercial trash dumpsters are not public dumpsters. I mean, those people, those businesses that have those out there, they pay for those. And if you go down there at night and fill it with your trash from your residence, and they have to have, they can't put theirs in, they have to have that dump, they get charged for that. That's not free. So, I mean, if they have to call Public Works and get a, other than their regularly scheduled dump of that, it costs them money. So, plus there's, it's against the law to do that. We have an ordinance against that. And so if they look in that trash and they find mail addressed to you, they can prosecute you for that. And I don't know what the fine is, but I'm sure it's more than one of those, what one of those orange bags costs. If you have more trash, it'll fit in your collection deal, so if you're doing it, please quit doing it, because it just causes a hardship on the business owner, and extra dumping for the Public Works people, and so let's not do that, please.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
At our El Dorado meeting, we had, excuse me, at the El Dorado meeting, we had the city manager, he addressed the budget and the readiness to serve at that meeting, and the reason for the $5 million increase. Good job.
I know, I hear good things about whatever that presentation was, too. Are you ready for me? The commission's getting ready to start back up, but we haven't met. I was going to mention, and I don't want this to sound like a gripe on staff, because it's certainly not a gripe on staff, so I'll start with that. I've had a few calls from folks, you know, asking for help on various things involving different departments and different, you know, kind of sectors of the city, and they've gotten some kickback in response from some of our employees, just saying, "We're unable to do that because of budget cuts." And I don't... And I don't love that response and I understand there's some things that maybe that has something to do with. But I think when we're at the same time raising five mils and we've rearranged some things, maybe we could just find a way to be a little more, not necessarily accommodating, but just in the way we're communicating some of those things. And so anyways, I just want to say that for awareness, kind of for everyone. If there's a better way for us to work through some of that, I prefer we do instead of just quick to say, commission cut our budget, I'm sorry, we can't help you. And of course, we'll take our piece of some of that as well, I'm not saying that, but anyways, I just wanted to kind of say that to everyone. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, yeah, I think the message is important, so we certainly have some challenges, but we're not broke.
Yeah, we're not broke.
I would add, I guess, spent the afternoon in REAP strategic planning, so it was nice to be part of a group that's kind of talking about how, a little bit more about regionalism and how that gets played out. It's good that, the city, thank you for giving me the opportunity to have, the city have a voice at that table, so. That's scheduled to wrap that planning session, there's more of those to come. Scheduled to wrap up, I think, in October and I'd be happy to give a report on what some of those goals are and how REAP is, is an advantage to any community that, that's a member, so. Are good things there, I'm anxious to report out on that in the future. Otherwise, I don't, I don't have anything else. Let's move to city manager to report.
I have just a few things. The fleet, free chlorine ends next week, so I know that about four weeks ago, we communicated the fact that we were going to begin the fleet free chlorine treatment of our water system. So the good news is that'll be ending here soon, so water should be returning back to the best tasting water in Kansas again. We will have a mill and overlay project on Twelfth Avenue from Main Street to the River Bridge. That'll be beginning on September twelfth. And as in partnership with the county, we'll be doing part of it and then the county will be doing that portion that's in the county, so that whole stretch will be improved, at least from a mill and overlay standpoint, so that'll be, that'll be good. So if you're traveling during that construction period, it might take a little bit longer, but I assume they'll have a car or they'll have a way to get through.
Yeah, it, the project will move very swiftly. The section of road, which is within the county, so when you get east of the railroad overpass, the eastern railroad overpass, the county will have flaggers there and, and be down to one lane. That portion within the city is four lanes wide except for the bridge. There will be a little constructive flagging going on there, but it ought to move swiftly and not impact too many people.
Is it going to go all the way from Main?
Yes.
The spray parks will be closing at the end of September. The spray park in Grand Park may close a little earlier than that. We've been having some issues with a sensor and so depending on if that can be resolved or not, we may shut that one down earlier. But if you have complaints or you do have inquiries about that, if citizens are out there and they notice something's not right with the spray park, go ahead and have them call City Hall and we'll send someone out to take a look at that. But it, more likely it's a faulty sensor that has been plaguing that for a little while. The Activity Center will not be open on Saturdays, we're actually switching to our fall hours and we've done some analysis and Saturday afternoons, we, we don't have anybody, so we're going to close them on Saturdays, but beginning in here during this month, we're going to again, switch to fall hours. So on Monday through Thursday from three to nine P M, it'll be open from Fridays, on Fridays from three to seven P M and then again on Sundays from one to five P M, you'll be able to enjoy some time in the Activity Center. And the Police Department just completed its step campaign yesterday. This is a multi-day enforcement period where they look at specifically enforcing seatbelt laws, drunk driving laws, various other traffic related laws and they get some funding back from the federal government with respect to how many citations they issue. So we'll be having a report back from that to you all here. And it's my understanding that that's the second piece of that they do, at least two different enforcements throughout the year and then we get some funding for that to buy, there's these equipment to help our Police Department do their, do their job. And finally, one thing that I do want to highlight, we do have a couple of open positions with, within the city that we are encouraging the citizens that may be interested or looking for new opportunities to apply. We have two firefighter positions that are currently open. We have four police officer positions that are open. We have an administrative assistant position with the Parks and Recreation Department, two maintenance worker positions with the Water Distribution Division, and one street maintenance position with the Public Works Department. We encourage any and all interested parties to apply at H R E Partners dot com. That's H R E P A R T E R S dot com, H R E Partners dot com. And hopefully we can get those positions filled.
When you take down the spray parks, can they paint the floor on that North Main restroom at that time? Or have they already done it?
We've already done it.
I believe, yeah, it's in the works.
All right, thank you.
Okay, can I real quickly go back and just mention something? I had a call, I believe it was Grand Park, that we had a, someone wanted us or encouraged us to just double check the locks on the doors. There was a lady and her two children that went into the restroom and they got locked in because something malfunctioned on the outside, so they had to call, luckily they had their cellphone and had to call to have someone come let them out, so we might just check those.
And it, and it must have been another park because Grand doesn't have restrooms.
Restroom, so it wasn't Grand. Then it was the other, it was the spray park, it was one of the spray parks.
North Main.
It wasn't.
It was, it was.
No.
Probably Summit Park has electronic locks at a certain time, they do initiate, so I don't know if they're having an issue with those.
We might just check the locks. Could have been bad.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is executive session for attorney-client privilege. How much time?
I think we're in it for fifteen.
Okay. Okay, fifteen? All right, I'm going to add some time to that, I had five minutes to that. So ten till.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah.
I move to recess into executive session pursuant to the attorney-client privilege exception under K S A seven five dash four three one nine B two to discuss pending legal matters and to reconvene the regularly scheduled meeting at seven fifty P M in the City Commission.
Second.
It's been moved it second, any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We shall retire to executive session, thank you.